Would you offer us with a word of prayer?
I will. Back to you, please. I pray to the Father, and the Lord, that He come to you tonight. Lord, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us individually and as a city. Lord, we'd ask you to be with us tonight as councilmen, go forth and make decisions that concern the city, city employees, and the future of this city. Lord, if you would, help us to make good, sound, well-judged decisions. Lord, if you would, be mindful of the fact that we ask you to keep us safe and be with us as we travel when we leave here tonight. Lord, we ask you some Jesus Christ prayers, may it.
If you have, if you've gone through your department reports and have questions, how would be to answer them? Are there any questions? No? Okay. We have one public comment, Steve Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Department heads. I've never stepped out of a reporter role to do this, so this is kind of odd, but I just wanted to throw an idea out. As you know, we have the Fourth of July celebration and Christmas in the park every year. Our bunch, and I know some of you do too, go over to Nacogdoches every year, and there's something over there that's really impressed me. They have a stage where the bands perform, and I did a little bit of research on the history. It was an old building on the Kane River, I mean, over 100 years ago, where these barges or whatever would come through, and it was like a customs house or something, and all that's left is the old brick structure. And what they did, they filled it in with dirt, and then they put probably, what, two, three inches of concrete on top. They've got a permanent stage, and it just stays there, and then when they have Christmas, they erect a structure, a tent-like structure, like we do at Sandy Creek Park. And I got an idea, because we really could use one, because what we use is just, you know, a little portable stage. The idea, and I'm just throwing it out there, it was something that would happen to also be approved by Jasper ISD, but they've got a pile of bricks which hang from the old, old gym built in the 20s, and the bricks aren't doing anything. Just an idea, what if those bricks were taken, salvaged, and made into just a square 20 by 20, 30 by 30, something like that, just a stage, or an outline, fill it in with dirt, two, three inches of concrete across the top? You've got a permanent stage forever. Name it the Jasper ISD Stage, something like that. Just an idea, I wanted to throw it out there, and I'm gonna throw it out to Jasper ISD and see what they think.
Thank you. All right. Item number 2, consider two sets of minutes for the regular City Council meeting of June 20th and a special cause City Council meeting of June 27.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass to unanimous. Item number 2, consider statement of qualifications for engineering services for Sandy Creek drainage project.
This is the one that we had to postpone and table last time because of a lack of submissions, but this is in order for us to get the creek's sand clean underneath the creek barrels after the flood of March the 25th, all that white sand accumulated on the stock. We have to have an engineering firm which has to go through and get a commission from the court, and the cost of the regulations and stuff, this is a process that we have to do just to give us a statement of qualification. And it will be, you know, the only one that submitted one was Gilbert Lassiter and Strong, which is one of the engineer firms that we use all the time.
So you need a motion to consider the SOQ for engineering services?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
It's just part of the down-down project. But these are all our projects.
Well, this is gonna be, this'll be, we might possibly get FEMA to reimburse us, it depends on actual fact, but we have to get the permits from the court to go in and do the work, and they won't let us do that without an SOQ, because SOQ would bring the engineering firm and go back in. Quite possibly, but we'll have to get it out one way or the other, because if we don't, the next time we have a flood, it's just gonna flood that much quicker because the sand's just there. And if we were to take it out and move it, we could just do that, but we can't do it without the permits from the state.
You can't do that for...
And if we were to put it back in, then we'd have to take it out and test it. So.
So we're gonna have a motion and a second. All in favor?
What kind of expense are we gonna have on that?
Where, the expense on us, maybe, what, $10,000 to begin with?
Yeah, the permit is the biggest expense, getting the permit, getting it done, and what issues our manpower to get the debris out, or debris.
And this is primarily under Main Street.
Uh, Marv Hancock, Main, Manuel Street.
Main Street.
Main Street really don't, it has to be all over.
But if you'll look at one end of the other, and look down at those barrels, you'll see some of them are three-quarters way filled with white sand.
Yeah. I know on Manuel Street, that white sand just, it just doesn't lie right in that bed. There's one barrel on Marv Hancock that's already in that wall.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass to unanimous. Item number 3, consider letter of support for signing supporting the Jasper Arboretum and the Master Gardeners in Jasper as the butterfly capital of Texas.
Aye, move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass to unanimous. Item 4, consider ordinance number 7-8-16 and contract with Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott LLP to provide additional collection penalties for delinquent municipal fines and fees.
Thank you, Branson County Council. I was here back, I guess it was on April 18th, so I've had a bit of time off before I was gonna present this. I hope all of you've got a copy of the proposal, if not, at least the one that I gave you to you back in April, or maybe in your materials. On that, you'll see some of our client list, and those are some of the courts and cities that we represent, collecting their fines and fees, and they've chosen to use an outside law firm to help supplement their collection efforts. A lot of cities have their own in-house collection staff, but if you keep in mind that we are only just a supplemental tool to help them by identifying where folks live, and sending them letters, and getting their phone numbers, and making contact with them to get a commitment to pay that overdue fine and fee. The fine and fee penalty does not kick in until it's turned over to us, and there are many of the cases that stay in-house, that may be doing work assignments, working it off, but not every ticket comes to outside collections and is assessed that penalty. And the ordinance is that instrument that authorizes the city to add that 30%, which is authorized by the criminal code, which is passed on to the offender. So there's no cost to the city. We get our money only when we collect your money. And the 30% is added on top of your debt, so you will be paid 100%. What I'm asking, if you're considering going into a contract with our firm to help your court collect those unpaid fines and fees, then you will have to consider this ordinance and pass that before we go on to the second part. So I don't know if this is out of order, but you have to do one before you do the other. I know there's some questions, there were some questions from a couple of councilmen about the add-on fee. That add-on fee, again, is paid by the offender. The collection rate for these types of debts are far lower than, say, an ad valorem, a link of tax, because that's usually secured by land, and you've got something there. These are unsecured debts.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent. That is the fee that we charge all of our clients, and you'll find that that's the industry standard, so to speak. Certainly, it's negotiable, but we ask 30% because they are very difficult to collect. Some of these fines and fees have been on the books for years, and we've got to track them down all across the United States. And once we've located them, that still doesn't guarantee payment. We have to get them motivated to pay. One of the programs that we have in place is what they call the warrant roundup. Every year, all the counties in the state of Texas come together, and they have a mass roundup, and it's advertised throughout all the cities, and this puts the offender on high alert, because they don't know if they're maybe going through Nacogdoches County, and they may feel like they're gonna get stopped there by their folks up there, because they're in communication with Jasper County. So the warrant roundup, in our experience, just to give you an example, San Jacinto County, one of our JP's, he always gets at least 10 times the amount of collections during those two months, because that one program, when we send out these notices in red, high-red letters, saying that you may be arrested, even though we don't have the jurisdiction to arrest, only the court does. And that's another thing, the judge and city clerks, they're gonna run that program, we're just there to help. If they don't choose to give us an account for whatever reason, all they do is they don't put it on the upload that we get each month. They can go through and handpick which accounts they want, as long as their 60 days pass due. And again, a lot of these are gonna be age 10, 15 years old, but they're sitting on the books, they're not getting collected. At least give it a chance to try and collect what's just sitting there. It's money found, at no cost to the city, and I think it's a win situation in programs like this, and again, cities throughout Texas, and this is just a list of our clients.
What are we doing now, current?
From what I understand, they're trying to set up payment plans, and when the payment plans are defaulted, I believe they try to give you a chance to work it out through public service.
They don't show up.
They don't, they don't show up. Again, the court, they have an opportunity to collect that money for the first 60 days. We have some clients that don't give it to us for 120 days, they want that additional time to try and collect it themselves. But again, we're a tool. We only get used as much as they decide to use us.
You know, excuse me.
Yes?
It's beyond me how this could happen in the first place. How can you let fines be delayed for 13 years? Somebody's dragging, but they're not doing their job, which is not your fault. The judge is not here tonight to answer any of our questions, but I'm confused about that, because it takes three days to issue a warrant to put them back in jail. If you see, after 60 days, if you see that they're not gonna make an effort to pay that fine, let them finish serving their sentence, go to jail, you know? And again, the judge is not here to answer that question, maybe you can, Gerald. Why only eight days in jail? Well, I was told that they can only serve eight days in jail. Can you answer that question for me?
No, they can stay in there all day, depending on how much they get, but the sheriff's office gives them $100 a day toward, toward the payment. The municipality, they only get a big dollar. So he can be in there as long as he needs to pay that fine. And they leave it at eight days, we've had some that...
Well, I was told it's eight days, and then, you know, then you let them out, and then I've offered them community service, and of course, they jump on that, but they never show up to do community service with me. So after three days of that, you know, we could issue a warrant, put them back in jail, let them finish serving their sentence out. This would avoid all these problems of these delinquent fines. So that's just my opinion.
Most of these delinquent fines are gonna be, are gonna be, you know, Beaumont, San Antonio, that's passed through, got a ticket, and just didn't pay it, and the odds on tracking them down as far as them getting stopped and picked up that way are slim. That's why there's some that are so far delinquent, and being a municipality, the statute of limitations don't come into play with our class of companies.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a good additional way. I want to say, because most of the in-county offenders, the judge may choose to deal with them on a different kind of program before they turn it over to outside collections. Only when they're given to us do we send out notices, get on the phone, try to track them down, and then we deal with them and tell them to pay the court. It's, again, it's an added tool, maybe, to help the deficiency there, where it was unsuccessful for five or 10 years, but going forward, we're gonna work with them to increase their collection rate, for even those that are six months, nine months a year, so that they don't become five years, 10 years. So this is a good, useful tool for his office to use.
Do we need a motion? Any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Also a move that we approve, or go forward with it?
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I pass. Mindful State, after move to the next one.
Okay.
Consider contract with Purdue Brandon to collect mowing, demolition, paving, liens, and assessments with delinquent taxes.
This, I was approached by the permit department, how they could get some of that money that they've expended on those mowing, liens, demolition, through the tax cases. Because it doesn't fall under the Texas property tax code, there's really not any, I don't know, vehicle to try and collect those, so those have to be contracted directly with the city. That's why we won't be adding any additional penalty to the mowing liens, that money will come out of your 100%. Okay? From what I, in visiting with their office, they've got probably $50,000 to $70,000 of mowing liens that you'll probably never see, unless you try and put that leaning in your tax judgment. And by doing that, that means whenever that property sells, at a tax sale, your mowing liens are gonna be paid. Right now, if you don't become part of the judgment, they're wiped out. Liens, bank liens, any kind of liens, except the IRS, they're never wiped out. But these mowing liens, by including them in your tax judgments, which we can do, when we start filing on property that's had mowing liens, I'll contact them and say, I just filed a suit on this property, do you have any mowing liens? And they say, well, yes, we do. And so I'll get that amount, and I'll tack it on to the judgment. Now, this is no guarantee that just because it's in the lawsuit that it's gonna get paid, but it's still, there's a chance that it's gonna get paid if the property brings enough money at a tax sale, or a resale, if it's sold as a resale. But right now, your only chance of collecting mowing liens are through your office, phone calls, and letters, and just hope you can get them in here to pay, do the right thing, or cut their water off, whatever other remedies y'all have in your collection program. But by contracting with us and letting us then represent you on these liens, we have a shot at collecting. And you'll be paid along with the county, the school, and all the other taxing jurisdictions. So it puts a priority on those liens, just by putting them in the lawsuit and having them part of the judgment, and when the judgment's satisfied, you'll get your money. And what we're asking for is 25% of what's collected. Basically, you give me a mowing lien that's been on the books for five years, if we can contact those folks, we'll collect it. I give you three, I keep one. If it's part of a delinquent tax lawsuit, whenever the suit is resolved through a tax sale and there's money realized, I give you three, I keep one. And that's basically what we're asking the council to do, is to initiate a program like this.
I thought with the delinquent taxes, you already collected delinquent taxes, and there was a thing built in?
That's for the tax element of the lawsuit.
Oh, cut it, but this is, this, oh, cut it.
It says, with the taxes.
What assessments would you have in the delinquent taxes?
There might be a late charge, or a recommit fee, or whatever other...
Would you know, Denise?
There would be any type of, I mean, we don't...
Any other?
No assessments of the delinquent.
No, because we don't tack on outstanding bills or anything else like that, so the only lien that would be a tax, it's gonna be the mowing and demolition.
It's just put there in case there was any other type of litigation.
Denise, do you know how many cases we have? I mean, what kind of volume are we talking about here?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I don't, because, I mean, you can go back as far as, we really just have to run to, go to the court, to the county clerk's office, and run a report, get them to run a report of anything that's got up, the city of Jasper's got a lien on. I mean, it probably, since my 13, 14 years, I mean, 14 years, it's probably, probably $25,000 or $30,000 worth of liens for demolition and stuff that we've done, but I can tell you before that.
And Mr. Lee, is it Lee, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Is that correct? You said that Mike Collier had told you it was about $70,000?
Well, I went over with the clerk, we went over some of the amounts that were still on the books, and I think we went back to 2010. After 10 years, that lien is no good anymore, you have to refile it. So we just went back to 2010, and I think we came up something close to $50,000.
Does this mean that demolition and paving stays in there?
Demolition and, and, we don't do any, I don't, we do demolition, the paving liens, I don't know where that came in there, but we do some of your wording.
Yeah, that's part of our standard.
Because all we do is...
Well, we don't need it, we don't need any of it.
You know?
Well, if you don't need it...
We don't have it.
But if you ever start assessing, yeah, but if you ever start assessing paving liens in the future, it's already there.
I thought this fit Michael Collier's job description.
The collection of it, no, they...
No, I didn't say that. I said, you know, the mowing and the demolition, and making sure it was paid.
Well, now, he can't make sure they're paid, they can file, he can file a lien on it when they get to that court.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
He does file a lien on it, but what this does is, is if they don't get it collected, and the lien is attached to the property, if that property was to go to sale, it allows him to tack that lien dollar amount onto the sale, but hopefully that we would get it. All that they do is, the Rhonda does, is she will send a letter to the owners. But most of the time, on the properties that we tack liens to, and mowers and stuff, it's just exactly like what he said, they are not out of town, they are mostly heirs, or heirs that don't care, that live out of town, because, you know, you can't find them half the time, and that's when we post, like we do, after a certain number of days, just to be able to get the unsightiness taken care of.
This just adds another layer.
Yes, it's not gonna cause us anything, and it may, and we may get lucky when they do go sell a house, if we get it, otherwise, it does stay on the books. But Ms. Hazel, it does stay the same way like that on utilities, because when people move, and they don't collect the final bill, or they steal it, we keep them on the books for the fact that any time they ever come back in, we can go back in, and we make them collect that before we give them new service, so they don't skip trace off with an O bill.
Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass to unanimous. Item number 6, which is consider Main Street electric poles and distribution replacements. Denise?
This is, this is part of Main Street, but it was not a part of Main Street. When we started going through, and Danny was looking at the electrical upgrades in our budget and stuff like that, Main Street came up, started wanting to get rid of the old copper, is that right?
Yeah.
So like what we're upgrading Hunterwood. So when we talked about doing the Main Street project, that's when we thought about, well, okay, if we're gonna do it, do the Main Street project, then we need to pull it in to the Main Street project, as far as the decorative poles. This is something that we still will deal with, we still have some logistics to work out with AT&amp;T, cable, new wave cable, they're okay with it, but we still have to work with outs with AT&amp;T, but I can't go forward with that until I know if we're gonna go, if we're going to be able to upgrade the lines, get rid of the old stuff with the new cable, and put the new poles down Main Street. So, how far? We'll go from 190 to 200 Houston Street to start with, this one, on this, on this part of it. Any of the other ones will be included in the other phases if we were to do anything on that. But those poles have been there since, none of these were replaced during Rita's, we were very lucky, but they are, they're getting old, besides the fact that the old wiring.
You may have said this, and I was digging around for the engineering, you talked about metal pool poles, like the aluminum poles, or like we have in the market?
No.
The galvanator.
Galvanator.
Your technical part.
Where are these sourced?
Well, we've got, we've got, White Power has excess funds in their...
Which is part of the grant.
No, sir, it's not part of the grant or anything, not part of the split between the city and JECO, and not part of anything of the Techstock grant, or the funding foundation anything, out of excess White Power funds.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
That's a lot of money, Scofield, you jumped right in here and seconded it.
And I appreciate it, Mr. Scofield.
All in favor?
You got new wire, don't worry.
Well, and he's probably appreciating that new wire at home, and that hot stuff.
I figured he'd be squealing down there for half a million dollars.
Probably don't move that fast, most don't.
Item number 7, consider budget workshop, August 9th or 11th?
9th.
What day is that on?
Tuesday.
I can't tell you Tuesday.
9th on Tuesday, 11th on the Thursday.
Well, okay, I'll change my schedule. 9th is fine.
Okay.
Go along with you.
What time would y'all like, at the middle of the day? You like it 1 o'clock, you like it lunch, and y'all can work on that?
Lunch sounds awesome.
How about we start at 11? 11, okay?
That's okay.
And then maybe we can finish by 11 to 1?
Yes.
We have it for that.
Whatever you want, Mr. Page, it's possible.
Whatever.
Okay.
All?
Uh-huh.
Thanks for hearing that.
Charles' turn.
Item number 8, consider amendments to the police department personnel policy.
I want to start by introducing y'all to our newest officer, Dr. P.J. Murphy, 36. He's had 15 years of experience, comes from Angelina County, served 12 years as sergeant. He was a wild tourney, that's how it works, gets, talks about his earth things, his white earth thing, he's our newest member of our family.
Don't be too funny, Cheryl, be nice to him.
Okay, I met y'all a couple of months ago, and asked to go back to the 2002 policy. Okay, I took you all a couple of months ago, and asked to go back to the 2002 policy, we want to make now and initiate it. And we were getting ready to, I've only did a couple of procedure policies. Reason being, officially get ready to test for captain position, and I needed to amend the old policy to where it fits the current department. The old policy had a couple, and this should be in fact, a couple of job descriptions that we no longer have, so they just need to be struck out. And then we have some new job descriptions that weren't in there, like SRO, some of the other mental health officers, things like that. So all it did was I added those job descriptions to it, and that's the amendment. The only amendment that, part of it that I would, I would draw your attention to is in the promotional process, says that we test, we do a little, and if we do not have three candidates that are qualified to test for the position, then we can go to the next lower rank. In other words, if, if, like the captains that we're testing, they, they need to have a master's certificate in law enforcement. If we don't have three candidates that fit that qualification, we can go down to someone within advance, in order to get enough pool to make a decent decision. And really, that's, that's the only changes. And, I mean, I'll be bringing more, of course, in a good time, but these I just want to get into effect before we do our, our testing and promotion.
Gerald, when is the active shooter scenario?
It is Thursday morning.
Thursday morning?
It is. We're going to start the scenario about 9:00.
Can you kind of give us a little summary of what that's going to entail?
I can tell you the scenario, I, I, I'll tell you the, the, how it's going to be addressed. I don't want that put out, strictly, you'll be kept, go back out, watch, and listen to. You don't want to know how we're going to address it. Unfortunately, as you know, we have shootings at schools and businesses that were, seem like every week. And this scenario, myself, Billy Ted, the fire department, life flight, analysts at the medical hospital, we're all putting this together as a mass training. We're going to have buildings. We will run it as a live scenario. We will have a couple of active shooters inside the building, with the fire alarms, the smoke, the whole nine yards. Some of the objectives is to, some of our guys have never been in a building when there was fi, shots being fired. It's very difficult to hone in on where that shot comes from when you inside a building, and I want them to get that experience to, to see what, okay, I can hear the shots, but how do I find the quickest route? Because the way you're trained in active shooters is you bypass all victims, and it's supposed to be all victims, and you go directly to the threat. You eliminate the threat, and then, once you get it safe, then you, you start heading and getting the victims out. We're going to stage at the high school. Like I said, we're going to have around 30 to 40 kids, victims, that the school will go through their lockdown process. We will go through and address the active shooter, and then once that, and we've got game wardens, we've got DPS, we've got county constables, all, all the law enforcement, particularly the park managers are going to be members in this. We're going to break into three-man teams, so everybody gets a shot to go through and see what it's like. Once that is complete, then we're going to come in and do the evacuation part of it, the, attend to the triage, get them to, they're basically going to take them to the hospital, some of them, if I'm not, maybe life flight, one or two of them, just, you know, for the process. We'll have a triage set up out there, and they'll go from the scene to the triage, VSS, and go from the triage to the hospital. Real life, you would be hitting multiple hospitals, depending on the severity of wounds or whatever. We will process the scene as normal crime scene with deceased persons, et cetera. That'll be a walk-through type thing, it won't be real detailed like it normally would, assuming the cost is not feasible. But we're doing all of this through DEOC, and afterward, we're going to have a meeting at the end ex, and discuss where we were lacking, things we need to address. We've already, just in preparations, have came up with a couple of issues and got them straightened out, one being found out their primary channel.
That's not what I have to bid out?
No, that's not what I have to bid out, because we, we've already contracted them, they're going to come forward, well, it's work in progress. The damage was found there, it's work in progress, and we'll go back.
These are reasonable costs.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a very good question. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to.
Do I have a second? Beg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass unanimously. It is now 6:40, we're convening an executive session. Is there any action from executive session dealing with personnel matters?
Yeah, I make a motion that we give Chief Hall the permission to handle personnel mountain within the department as he sees fit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number two, deliberation regarding real, real property. Any action?
Yes, I'd like to motion that the city purchased from Trishere, the property, better known as Tryonite Motel, for the amount of $12,000.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There being no further action, we stand adjourned.